Before, we just did not have to gavel back in for a work session.
No.
No. Goodness, for the dinosaur down there.
I wear that badge with pride.
All right, just for us to kind of regroup after what we heard at the public hearing and then yesterday, and Tammy, if you'll just indulge me for a minute. So, I kind of summarized the 20 speakers that we had at the public hearing. And just so, as we go forward, you guys can have all this in the back of your mind. We had safety and security officers at the middle schools, the arts program funding stipends for the individuals, or, excuse me, for the teachers, foreign language teachers. We had an instructor from Chopticon, school counselors at Margaret Brent Middle School, parent educators, the Great Mills High School ROTC program, the, not program, excuse me, additional instructor. Thank you, Jackie, for clarifying that in the paper, too. School psychologists and pupil personnel workers, special education, parent educators and teachers. And then, we did have one letter that came in from a, from a teacher-
Teacher.
-that asked us to honor the negotiated agreement.
And did you also talk, maybe you did, the arts, the music theater and performing arts-
Yes, that was the arts program funding. She wanted additional stipends for those individuals that put their time in for those. So, and that's in addition to the items that we had already identified in the work session, which was a floating secretary mentor, human resources and workforce, excuse me, human resources and workforce diversity coordinator, webmaster, instructor at Great Mills High School for ROTC, evening high school professional development for the nurse, nurses, a safety and security assistant, and then building service workers and water chiller maintenance, which we have already determined that that can be assumed into the current budget, correct? So, that item would come off of that list for that $32,000. So, that's number nine on your items below. Okay. So, just keep all that in the back of your mind as we go through this. All right, Ms. McCork, it's all you. Oh, and Dr. Smith.
Can you hear me? Yes, you can. Okay, great. So, before you, as a bit of an eye chart, I didn't want to make a 30-slide presentation, but I wanted to put in context a little bit about how we're doing our work and what we use to drive our work as we're preparing each year's budget. So, the sheet that's, the PowerPoint that's before you, the one half, and I know that when it got pushed over into, it's very hard to read, but this is the multi-year projection expenses summary created by the county commissioners, and it gives us a forecast of what we should be anticipating for funding for the 19, 20, 21, 22 years out. So, this is the document that at the end of the budget cycle, it was presented publicly on May 9th, so that was as we concluded all of our work. That was, that's really kind of the driving document for how we put together our budget. So, based on that chart publicly presented as part of the budget process, it chronicles the funding from '17 to the, to the school system, $102.6 million. Now, some of that money was recurring and some of that money was one-time. So, the following year, in 2018, the year that we are currently in, we are funded at $102.189 million. Now, that actually looks like it's a decrease, but it's, it's a, it's not truly a decrease in that all that money is now-
Recurring.
Recurring. That's the word. So, this is where we are. With this look, for the next four years, the county commissioners put as a placeholder a 2% increase in overall funding to the school system. That means that in '19, we should be building a budget as a placeholder of about $104 million. In 2020, it would be 106, in 2021, 108, and 2022, 110. Now, we could argue one way or another whether or not a 2% increase meets needs, but that was the number that was presented, and that was ultimately the number we were more or less working with as we built the budget. So, that's pretty much where we started. It's from their work session from May 8th, 2000, May 9th, 2017. Now, since that time, we have engaged in conversations with the county commissioners. We've worked through, we've talked about, we've looked at the information that they've been presenting as far as where revenues are coming in. But it wasn't until yesterday that they gave us an updated view of this same sheet. So, yesterday afternoon, they presented this 2019 budget multi-year projection expenses summary. And if you look at the previous year, they have varying percentages assumed growth. They have 2% in for us. The, what was presented yesterday, as they've removed the 2% assumed growth, they've replaced it with M-O-E, maintenance of effort, which means flat funding. And then, they've projected that out for the next five years. So, in 2017, 102.6, in 2018, the current year we're in, 102.1, in 2019, 102.3, in 2020, 102.8, in 2021, 103.2, in 2022, 103.9. So, this is where we are. Basically, looking at an increase of $156,000 from last year, and then about a half million dollars more or less averaged over the next three. What was presented yesterday publicly is, we had assumed and built a budget, $2 million. What we see yesterday is 156, about a $1.8 million less than we had assumed as we concluded our work last year. Now, why do we have maintenance of effort and flat funding? We haven't really had a conversation yet. We haven't had an opportunity to speak directly to the entire county commissioner group. But yesterday, they did share some information about their revenues, the revenues that are coming into the county, and the sheet that particularly, you can see that there's growth in most of their revenue categories, with the exception of fines and highway user, but those are smaller accounts. In the second largest group of money that comes into the county, income taxes, they had approved in 2018, $92 million, and in '19, they're projecting to have less money, to actually have a revenue decrease of $263,000, a decrease of .3%.
And the governor's budget and what the state is projecting, their income tax revenues will be-
The governor is projecting that 2019 will be-
5.3%.
5.3%. Okay, 5.3%.
So, our commissioners are decreasing theirs, but the governor says 5.3.
We're projecting a loss of .3%. Now-
Sorry. Can I just jump in?
Sure.
Finance lady. But the only, the, the, coming from a business perspective, the item that is concerning to me is that I don't see that there has been a justification provided for that number. Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't, I don't, I don't know what-
Right, I understand.
You know, I mean, you build a budget, you take assumptions of what the economy's doing, you know, you know, what your, what your own business is doing, and then you make assumptions based on that, and you come up with a percentage. I don't know what is, what is going into their assumptions in order to arrive at that percentage.
The commissioners or the governor?
The commissioners. The governor's is published, the commissioners is not.
Well, then, that was part of the, what was the report that came out in December that gave that number?
The Bureau of Revenue Estimates Report.
Bureau of Revenue Estimates Report. That had the placeholder of 5.3.
And that's what they do for a living.
Well, the-
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
I have a question on the maintenance of effort. It's, it's static, but that's predicated on the fact that we don't have additional students.
Right.
So, if we have more students, which is pretty obvious we're going to have, wouldn't that mean the separate number go up?
Right. So, if we had, so, like, this year, we only had 27 students more come in, and that's why we have the increase that we have. If we have no students come in next year, then we have the exact amount of money. If, by some reason, our enrollment goes down, they can actually provide, provide less money. So, maintenance of effort could also result in an overall reduction in, in funding of the school systems. And some counties have actually been dealing with it, and the states actually introduced legislation to stopgap that for the, for the counties that do that. I know that Calvert County has worked pretty creatively with their commissioner group and with the legislature to handle that. As far as how they get to this, this, they approved $92 million in 2018, and now they're going to say 91 in 2019, is they did a budget adjustment. They did a revenue adjustment of about $2.7 million, or 3% reduction, in fiscal year 18. So, it looks like, now, these numbers, none of these numbers are known. All of these numbers are projected. Tax year 17, 18, 19, 20, they don't know. We don't know what these numbers are going to be. But they've reduced down that adjustment to $2.7 million less. That means that $89 million is the revenue that they're going to receive. And then, from that, they're saying it'll increase by 3% to 91 and 3% to 94. So, with that-
Can I ask, and maybe Ms. McCork, you might know. So, with the, what they're saying is a decrease in the income tax rate, and to Karen's point where she said, the governor has stated that it's 5.3 increase across the state, and he has provided that information publicly, how he got to those numbers. Do the county commissioners come back later and say, this is how we've gotten to those numbers? Do they publicly, do you know if they publicly will produce that evidence of how they've gotten to those numbers?
What they've done in the past is they've provided historical information as to why they're basing their numbers going forward. So, they've only provided historical information through tax year 2016 because they're still in the process of receiving their revenues for tax year 2017. So, they're using historical percentage increases up through 2016 as far as their basis, whereas the governor's office looks at what's going on in the economy today, and they're doing future projections based on capital gains increases that have been recognized as well. So, they're looking at a variety of different economic indicators, whereas locally, we just look at historical projections.
Okay, but they're looking at historically what has happened in the past. They are not looking forward.
And wasn't there one year that there was a real aberrancy? A 1.8% increase?
And that was actually in 2016, which happened to have mirrored the county, I'm sorry, the state level, which recognized a 1.6% increase.
And was that ever explained why, at either, at the state or the local level?
I didn't receive any additional information.
So, I, I offer this only as, this is the information that was shared yesterday. We haven't had any other guidance from the county commissioners, so we can only assume that this is where we are. So, I know that we had, you know, we're going to move forward with the budget. We're going to discuss the concerns that were brought before you on, on Monday. We craft a budget to the best of our knowledge, given the resources that we know and balanced. I present that in January and then modify it throughout, and then we have public comment. But then, after that, you give me guidance, and it becomes your recommended budget to go to the county commissioner. So, at this point, if you want to switch over to our, our current budget, I just think it's important to share what was shared yesterday so that we kind of understand in context where we, just where we are.
And since those documents that you provided on the screen were not in this PowerPoint, can you please load those for us in a Google Doc so we can access that?
Sure, we'll, we'll take the county commissioner documents that they presented yesterday and last May, and we'll load both of those for your reference.
And all of those documents can also be found in the county commissioners' board docs online.
Yep.
Now, the other thing, too, is the 2%, and correct me if I'm wrong, the 2% that they based their, for projection off of was due to what, the information that we provided them through the contract?
When, when we were originally negotiating our multi-year contract with ISMAC and SAMA, the overall anticipated impact to the budget is about 2% each year. So, that's really why it's been put as a placeholder, so that if we are to honor our agreement, it requires about a 2% increase in, in funding each year, give or take. There are offsetting, there are other ways that we go about, about recognizing that, but that's about, that's where we are.
So, so, we provided them information for them to, I guess you would say-
Built their budget.
Incorporating their projections.
Right. So, what happened is that when we signed the negotiated agreement, or when it was ratified, excuse me, I had a call from the county commissioners wanting to know if we had, if, what, if we had ratified it, because they were on their way up to do their, their roadshow for, for their rating for their bond. I told them what we had, you know, what, what the association had voted on, and, you know, and before that, we had been perfectly clear what the step increase would be for each year, and then what needs would be of the system from that, as long as that agreement was in place, right? Because that also took into effect the healthcare costs that would, that would offset some of those expenses. So, they have known since the time that we ratified that agreement what our needs would be going forward, and I'm assuming that that's what helped them to build that five-year, their, their five-year plan. So, you know, we didn't, it's not like we arbitrarily picked numbers out of a hat. They all knew. Every meeting that Scott and I had with them at the time, when we were pushing to get the funding for the, for the contract, was if, you know, if we can make this happen this year, this is how stable we will be in the upcoming four years. And it was, it was, it could not have been more clear.
So, and just, this is kind of throwing this out there, too. So, since we are the biggest, the largest-
For their budget, right.
For their budget, is this something that they would have used in their, in order to get the bond rating, or to get approval for a bond rating, or do you not know?
Well, just, I mean, from my experience in doing roadshows-
Right.
-when I was in my other lifetime, if you have the largest component of your budget that is known, so to speak, which is the school system, and they've all said that it, that it was, it very clearly is, and our largest expense clearly is salaries and benefits, that if I'm a bond rating agent, or if I'm a banker that wants to take your bonds to market, that's going to be huge for me, you know, because I know that you have some stability. You don't have a, you don't have a negotiated agreement potential that would swing widely from year to year, because you have, now have a known cost for the next four years.
So, they had all this time to plan, to look forward, and to be able to set their budget from now for the next, at least to plan that way, knowing that this is what it was going to be.
I think what you're trying to say is that they, they knew that this was coming.
Right.
They knew that this amount, that we would need this amount. And in answer to your question, from any discussion that Dr. Smith or Tammy, or, you know, that we have had with them, it was, it was clear that this was the number that we needed, and that if we ratified the contract, that this was the number and the percentages that we would need going forward.
And this year, I believe their bond rating was upgraded. And I would have to think that, that our stability in being able to, to show what we were going to need from, from year to year, and that being a reasonable cost, would have been one element, an important element, in an upgraded bond rating. So, their cost to borrow money has decreased because we were able to provide stability for them.
Right. Because if you, if you remember before, like, the first year we were on the board, everything was kind of up in the air. We didn't have a negotiated agreement. It had been, I, you know, we were negotiating two years in a row. We didn't know what the number was, you know, was it going to be 5 million, was it going to be 4 million, was it going to be 6 million? We, we didn't know. But then, after we had that negotiated agreement in place, it, it took a lot of the angst-
Uncertainty.
Exactly. Uncertainty out, even for the county commissioners, because now, they could, they could plan for five years, because they knew that our cost would be-
A cer- right.
$2.3 million, which is, you know, a step increase. Now, the school system has done a great job in reducing that even farther with the healthcare items that have been, you know, that have been, been used to offset that amount. So, it's, that, that's just where we are. But I just, I just want to be perfectly clear, we did not just, like, pull anything. They, we were very upfront with them about where we were with our contract and what, and what the, what the cost would be.
And, and that's what I thought, and that's why I'm just like, where is this now, all of a sudden, coming from? Where, it seems like they didn't know.
Well, and, and to, you know, just to amplify what Karen mentioned, a, a big part of that contract was that we were able to accomplish it by achieving savings through healthcare. We gave up some things, the associations gave up some things. It was a compromise, but it was a very effective collaboration. And so, rather than putting all of these dollars as an on top of, it was, we achieved it by, by achieving savings through some healthcare changes. And so, that decreased the cost, in essence, of paying for the salary increase.
Right. And I even take it one farther. If you remember, the year that we signed the contract, we still did not have enough money to cover the step increase that was part of the negotiated agreement. So, we had to go back to the association and get their approval to put everyone on the new pay scale-
Right.
-and have them concede to just take that increase and then wait another year for their step increase-
Right.
-in order to get that contract signed. So, they had, so they're, so the association, in addition to signing the four-year agreement, taking the concessions on healthcare that they knew were going to be coming in years three and four, right? Then, they also conceded to not necessarily get a step increase for that first year, but yet, put them on the scale. So, some people got raises, so to speak, some people didn't, just so we could get that agreement through.
And just to go back, the scales that were put in place, we took all of the pay scales and we made, we redid all the pay scales. We abbreviated them from, from a 20, from a 30 step with breaks of pay increase overall and holding patterns, to a 20-step progression, to a, to a set 2.5% across each one of the steps, so that it makes it even easier to forecast cost, because it's not as though, if everybody gets a step, it's a consistent amount if you're on that scale anywhere. It's not as though you get more money in year five than you got in year one or year eight. It's a consistent percentage across the entire scale.
And no one waits nine years-
And no one-
-to get a salary.
To get a step.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, you know, it was, it's, it's a, it was a fantastic bit of work, and that's why I applaud the board for the budget that we're going to be looking at right now. We're, we're going to do everything in our power. We're not going to concede the earned negotiated step of employees, and that's why that's the budget that comes forward. Where we, where we have the difficulty is, had we received the funding as presented in May 9th of 2017, we wouldn't have had speakers to the public forum on Monday. The majority of things that they were speaking to are the things that are not included in the budget. We would be able to, we would be able to meet that, to meet those expectations. And in fact, that's where we're going today, so would you-
Just, just an observation, we're talking about the, the knowledge that we have on our future costs, and we presented it to, to the county commissioners, they should have known. My point is, from what I'm hearing, is, well, it doesn't matter, you know, they just don't have the money, so.
I would agree with you on the fact, if they tell me why they're dropping down their revenue percentage.
Right. That's what I was kind of bringing up, too.
That was, that's kind of where I'm going. The, to me, the important issue here is, is trying to convince, you know, the county commissioners that, and based on, on the results we had Monday night, the importance that we, we add these items. And like you say, gosh, you know, a year ago, we had, we, we thought we had the money. Now, we don't. Could you explain to us where this revenue loss is? Now, is that something that we could say to the commissioners?
You can say anything.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, you could certainly, you could certainly, we could, we could reach out to county administrator Dr. Rebecca Bridgett to see if she could work with the CFO, Jeanette Cudmore, to come to provide a, a deeper explanation so that we might better understand. The, what was presented, we've been, we've just been to the, I've only attended a handful of the budget work sessions, and so, what I have is just what was presented publicly. I don't, I don't know, in the background, what other documents might be used and how they might be working all of that. But that's, I mean, that's, to be honest, when we, when we talk about having joint work sessions between the Board of Education and the county commissioners, the only thing we should really ever be talking about is money and budget and forecast and planning. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a really important component piece. I know the last time we met, we talked a great deal about our enrollment and how we project enrollment, and we reinforced the fact that Ms. Kim Howe projects enrollment with the accuracy of about 99% accurate, and that was a great conversation to have. Perhaps we could have a similar conversation about the projecting of, of revenue, so that we can get to the point where we're, so that we're, where we really are in the school system, because enrollment and revenue kind of go hand in, hand in hand. There shouldn't be surprises in either.
And I guess, Jim, the only other thing I would, if, I, I appreciate the fact that the money isn't there, you know, or that the, the estimates are not showing that the money isn't there. I guess my counter to that would be, what steps did you take in the years preceding this-
Exactly.
-to ensure that we would have that revenue base?
Right.
Right?
What's happened in the last year?
Correct.
Where, where was the surprise?
Yeah.
Right.
Where was the surprise?
And that's where I would like to see more, for me, more transparency, and that way, I have an understanding of what they're presenting, you know, how they got to this number, so that I can ask educated questions on what they're presenting. But at this point, we just don't know anything. We just know that they're stating that they're projecting a decrease in revenue.
And, and the disconnect is, the governor at 5.3% increase in revenues, and the county at negative .3% in revenues, and I look at the stock market over this last year, the extraordinary capital gains that people are going to be, are going to be taxed on, realizing on the, this year's, for the, you know, 2017 income tax, it's going to be significant.
And also, look at the growth of our community. If you look at the growth in the county, you have all these new restaurants, this, what is it, the Harris whatever, these-
There's Jeters.
I always get, I, oh, God, Harris Jeters. But, but all the, you know, these new stores and new restaurants and the, you know, people being employed at these places, and, you know, and the, the base has not decreased in size as, you know, like, as far as I know, any programs leaving. So, I'm just not sure where, you know, when I'm seeing this growth in the community, why there's a projection of a decrease in revenue. This is where I'm having a hard time, and this is where I would like to see the transparency, so I can ask educated questions on how they got to that number.
And just as a reminder, developing the budget, it's not just looking at the revenues, which is an extremely important component, it's also evaluating your expenditures.
I'm sorry, the what?
It's also evaluating your expenditures. So, you have a balancing act there. So, it's not only looking at the revenue projections-
Right.
-from the county and the real estate taxes and income taxes, but where there are savings that need to be recognized and can be carried forward into the future years. And there was an $8 million budgetary savings with the county government on the expenditure side last year.
And you could add, you know, that their fund balance, I mean, they've got an enormous fund balance. What's it used for? I mean, that's one of the purposes of the fund balance, I would assume, is for unexpected expenses, that they, they can dip into that.
Or one-time funding items.
Right.
So, we'll start with a recap of where we left off, and that was modified superintendent's budget reflecting a $1 million increase in local funding and $1.9 million in use of fund balance for those non-recurring items that we spoke of, for a total unrestricted fund balance increase of $4.7 million. The non-recurring monies are in the area of mid-level textbooks and instructional supplies and operation of plant totaling $1.9 million. The recurring monies are $2.7 million, which are going to investment in our people, the negotiated agreement, as well as the offsetting healthcare changes, support for our students, sustaining our system, and non-recurring funding items. So, at your last meeting on the screen- So at your last meeting, on the screen are the eight items that we were asked to bring back before you for consideration and since, and of course, you have additional items from your public hearing that you'd like to consider as well. So at this time, um, we're looking for some direction from you as to what you would like to have incorporated in your budget. And we did provide the cost of each of these items to you as well.
Um, so I think we have a couple options. Tammy sent, gave us all, you guys all have this sheet right here, this little square. So, if you look at that, the number at the top, the one oh four point two is the number that the county projected out as our budget on May ninth of two thousand seventeen when they approved their fiscal year eighteen budget, right? So, that gave us the two million dollars in funding over fiscal year eighteen, of what we have now. So, if Tammy goes back to that one slide, right now, we only have asked for an additional one million dollars in local funding.
Recurring, right.
A recurring, right, sorry.
Which is less than one percent.
Right, which is less than one percent. And to Dr. Smith's point that I think he had on Monday night was that all of the other county budgets were slotted in or, or placemarked at one percent.
Right, they had an assumed growth of one percent.
Right, exactly. So, we have a couple options. We could, the way, and I'll just lay them out just to kinda keep things organized. We can stick with what we have right here, with the change of one point or of only asking for an additional one million in local recurring funds. We could, um, go through and cherry pick items between what we discussed at our public work session and what we've heard from during the public hearing about what we think needs to be added. Um, or we could go with and present a budget of one oh four point two, which is what the county commissioners had placemarked in their five-year plan in May of last year. And if we do that, then that gets us to an additional, what, one million dollars
One million forty-three thousand.
that we need to add, or that we could add to the budget that we have standing right now.
Okay, so you, you're, uh, so the two percent incre- that was supposed to be the placeholder, even with the decrease or, you know, the subtraction of the healthcare, what was the other thing, the healthcare and, uh, we see the other thing that you had said, help, that you got to the million? Or I guess the state, the state fund.
It was the state revenue increase.
Okay, so the state and then the savings from the healthcare is where we got the million?
Correct.
Okay, so, was, is the, uh, the funding, the one oh four, is that with the, that state revenue and the healthcare in mind?
Yes.
Oh, it is, okay. I wasn't sure if that-
Right, only because we, like, when, when we initially previewed the budget with the county commissioners two by two, back at the beginning of January, we already used that offsetting negotiated healthcare change.
Okay, you did, okay.
Just an estimate, we didn't have the numbers firm because the RFP hadn't been back yet and, and vetted. But it, you know, we told them that we needed two point three for a step increase caused, but that was offset by the, by the healthcare savings. So, I, I don't really wanna go back on that, 'cause that's, that's-
No, 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 that's fine. I, to me, I personally would like to see the one oh four go forward because this is, this was their placeholder. They, they should have, you know, I guess planned. And I don't see, at this point, what the evidence is because they have not been transparent, at least in my opinion, and presented why they are decreasing, um, stating that the minus point three percent. Um, I have not seen the reasoning behind this. So, for me, I would like, I would like to project, okay, this is what we gave you a long time ago, and go for with the one oh four. And then, if they can come back and show me, and show everyone else in the community why their, their decrease in their projection, then, you know, maybe I would have a different opinion, but at this point, I don't see that. I don't see why they are stating the, the decrease. So, I would like to go forward with what we initially had planned, um, with the one oh four.
No, we never really had planned the one oh four, 'cause remember, our initial budget was one oh eight, right? So, this is still-
Okay, well, that's what I meant, with the, the stating that we are going to the minimum.
Right, you meant, you meant, you meant the one oh four that was, that was placemarked by the county commissioners, correct?
Right, I'm, yes, I'm sorry, that's what-
So, just to cut right to the-
Right to the chase.
Right to the skinny of it, all of the things that you brought up, um, minus the chiller, that's seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Okay, if we put all of those items back into the budget, that is the, the floating secretary, the diversity coordinator, the webmaster, the JROTC instructor.
Yes.
Seven hundred and forty.
But we also, but I, but did you also-
Evening high school, the nurse PD, this, the, uh, safety and security officer, and the building service workers, that would, that's seven hundred and forty thousand dollars that would go to the, um, local recurring budget line. That would then make it one point seven four recurring. Still one point nine one time and all the rest would remain the same.
Well, yes, but that still wouldn't bring us to the one oh four, two thirty-three. I, there, you know, these were items that we brought up.
But then we had people bring up other items during that-
Counselors.
You know, such as a counselor, that's important, some of these other things, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean-
Well, language teachers.
Right, I mean, I would like, just me personally, and knowing how the climate is in some of the schools and just seeing all the cognizant reports that are coming in.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, I would clearly be behind a safety and security officer. Um, the, and this is not just my only thoughts, this is, that's not on our, our list over here. Um, the school counselors, um, just because I think that they, they take a lot of the burden of the disruptive students that we have, um, in the, in the system as well as this, to Mrs. Weaver's point, that she makes every budget year, the school psychologists and the people person workers.
That's right, we need those, because right, it's now one to like
Right.
two thousand instead of one to seven hundred.
I'm not, I'm not discounting class size, and I'm not discounting that we need teachers and things like that, but I think that, just from hearing stories, both in the community, I think that a lot of the disruptiveness and difficulty that the teachers have in the classroom is from those disruptive students.
Right.
So, if there's a way that we can assist them-
So, two counselors, because two of our schools have three counselors already.
No, no, I am a hundred percent-
Two of our schools only have two, so two counselors, that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and now we're at one point nine.
Well, I think the one thing with the, uh, the nurses, that, that could be a, uh, the development could be a one-time, you could put that into the one-time funding.
Um, that's six thousand dollars.
Right, but still.
That's okay. But, uh, well, if we go to Dr. Smith's thought on the evening high school as to what we had during the initial work session, to not start it right away.
After the first quarter.
The-
I don't know what you're, I don't know what you're-
The only, the only challenge with, with that is recognize that there is legislation out there for paid sick leave. And so if that, and it's, I know it's in, it's out, it's up and down, about what's the cost to us gonna be if we have to provide sick leave for our substitutes?
That would be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So if we put the evening high school in on that time, that's our fault.
And that is not factored in. So, um, you can swap that for that? I mean-
Yeah, that, um, and I-
You take evening high school and put evening high school slash subs subs.
Subs.
That's what they're, they're sub subs.
So, let me, what are you saying, make sure I'm understanding about evening high school? Are you saying what?
Um, well, right now-
It's gonna be more money.
Well, what we could do, so you're, if you're, if the magic number is two million dollars, you're at one point seven four, everything is on this sheet. If you add in two middle school counselors, you're at one point nine million dollars. If we put a placeholder of another estimate for what it might cost for a sub subs of a hundred and, whatever, to round out the rest of that with a hundred thousand dollars for sub subs, you're at two million dollars and that, you're, that, that you're there.
And that still leaves out things like the athletic trainers', um, after-school programs?
After-school programs, we don't know. I mean, if they get cut at the federal level, and that's just the president's budget and our USD secretary cut a billion dollars. Now, I don't know if that's gonna ever fly in the Senate and the House, we'll have to, we'll have to see, but.
Now, can we get by, I know we talked about the webmaster, can we get by with, uh, cutting that down and having, like, the, our, our, uh, websites might not look so glamorous anymore, but like, bring that down to the minimum and get, like, that's what I'm saying, if you need a peer educator versus-
Well-
I, I'm- I think it's the OCR complaint that we still have to be-
Right, we have to, we have to, we have to comply with OCR, so, I don't know how-
Could we get a part-time person?
Um, we'd be contracting hourly and you'll consume a great deal more money than-
Right.
The web, the webmaster is, it's funded, is, um, that's a very low starting salary or a low salary for somebody who has that level of skills.
Yeah, we'll be lucky to get somebody.
Well, I know, I did discuss, like, the, just one OCR complaint, that, that, like, shoots everything out the window, you know, so-
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're one in a seven in a minute.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if we could do something different with that.
I think the web presence is only gonna continue to grow, and I, I think we have to be aware of that.
Okay, so, let, let me, let me just throw this out there. Remember, Dr. Smith, when we had our first budget session, you said you had an à la carte menu on the side?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, if you're, if, I would like to see what the budget looks like with your à la carte menu in. I mean, just, just saying because, I mean, we, the five of us can sit up here and say, this is what we think, this is what we know, but I mean, you have built the budget based on the input from the people that are literally on the ground.
You read my mind.
So, I would like to see what their à la carte is. I mean, just because I think that we need a school counselor, because I see what the impact it would have on students at a middle school, doesn't mean that I'm right.
Oh, no, no, that, that was in the, all of those things were in the original request.
Okay.
Those were all in the original request. The-
I, I think, I think we've given you a number to shoot for. And I, I think you shoot for that number.
Right.
Based on what, on what, on what your staff has built.
Shoot for the one oh four.
So, so I just wanna be very clear, with what we've shared today and what we've shared publicly before, four point seven million dollars gets us the, all the things that were on that previous sheet, okay? The, most importantly, it honors our negotiated agreement.
Right.
Everything that's on this sheet that you have identified, had questions about and believed to be a priority, you're not gonna get any disagreement from anybody in this room. I add those to that, and I get to one point seven. The counselors at middle schools get put in every year
And they always get taken in.
and get taken out every year. With what's going on in our middle schools, certainly, and the impassioned plea, I think that, uh, Dr. Montgomery's in the back there, I don't think she's gonna disagree that that's a need. If we put those two in, it gets to one point nine. And if we ask, we put in a little bit more as a placeholder for whatever sub subs might cost,
Yeah, two million.
we'll be at two million dollars, we'll be at what the original requ- what, what the original forecasted amount is, and I can bring that back to you in a clean fashion, categorically dispersed. The JROTC third instructor will be in. And the only question that-
It's not being canceled.
The most important, and I, you know, I, again, I have to, I have to give credit to everybody who came out
Yes.
and passionately spoke about, every one of them spoke positively about the school system, the people with whom they work, and they identified a, a need. And that same level of passion has to happen, not on the one day that the board hears it. It needs to be heard throughout the year. And it most importantly, needs to be heard when we get to the point where we're talking about the actual long-term funding of education. Because that second slide that I showed you, where it's, where it's maintenance of effort for the next four years, we're not talking about small decisions that are gonna have to be made. We're talking about very, very impactful decisions about the opportunities that our children have.
And if there's going to be another BRAC, then that is going to hurt the commissioners and it's going to hurt this community, because that will be factored in for any BRAC.
Yeah, well-
Pure and simple.
And, and I don't wanna draw any conclusion about that other than that was what was shared publicly. That's the most recent thing I have from our local funding agents. That's the last bit of information, we don't have, I, so I, so full this, that's what we have.
Well, and just to put it all in context, right, so all of these children right now that are in seventh and eighth grade, what we're spending right now and what the schools look like right now are going to either look like what they are or less as they move through to graduate.
Correct.
Right, for the next, and so, that impacts, you know, every child that is in seventh through-
And every person that works with every child, because
Right.
there will be no possibility
Right.
of honoring a negotiated agreement outside of this year. And in fact, if they really do flat fund at a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, we're gonna have to come back with some, we're gonna have to figure out a way to make up that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we will have to come back and, and cut something. Because we are gonna honor the negotiated agreement, at least that's the guidance that I've heard from you.
Yep.
That's it.
And, you know, at the, at the end, um, that's paramount.
Well, a- as far as I'm concerned, what you've laid out in terms of what we've given you, the number we've given you to shoot for and the additions that you provided, um, that's what I would like to see next Wednesday.
That is what you shall have.
That's just me, so.
That's me too.
Mr. Davis, what do you think?
Well, I agree with a hundred percent.
That you shall have.
I agree.
Mary.
There you go.
All right.
Okay.
Well, that was a fun work session.
Does anyone have anything else? Jackie, I'm sure you have a thousand questions. We're gonna, we're gonna finish this up.
While we're at it.
Thank you. I hear her furiously, like, turning pages and taking notes.
I guess the county commissioners have a, uh, a-
What else do you have?